Recording in progress.
That Mayor Hampton is ill and will not be here tonight, so.
Oh, he's ill.
Iowa.
Put that on record, Iowa bills.
We call this duty of order. Do we have any agenda additions or are we ready to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Seconded. All favor approving the agenda if you say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Anybody here in public here speak to any particular topic? It's not already on the agenda? Is there anybody in the room?
Nobody on my.
And we move on then to the consent agenda. So this one item there about city house minutes and number fifteen media. The chance to study it. Are you ready to move on?
Approval of the consent agenda is presented.
Scott is your second.
I'll second.
Deb. All favor approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Open a public hearing for an order amending chapter three boundaries, section three point oh two, voting precincts of the city of Mount Vernon, district code. And are there any comments from the city hall or anything new to add here, Chris?
No, other than in order to try and get done this calendar year, if we don't get any feedback after this meeting, at the second meeting in December, I would probably ask you to approve the second hand turn reading. So they can get it in the paper, but beyond that, no. This is more of this process that we have to go through every ten years as the census numbers come out.
Okay. So not seeing anybody here in the public. You see them?
Do you need an option to vote for them again?
No, he, the mayor is close.
And Doug, again, you don't have any, any public comments?
Nobody showing up right now. Paul and Mark are on, but nothing.
Mark. Especially close the public hearing, move to F two, which is the ordinance twelve dash six dash twenty twenty one A of many chapter three boundaries, section three point oh two, voting precincts, city of Mount Vernon, district code. Consider decision in this process as far as the voting site for the south side, is that still to be determined by?
No, so the county will determine the voting sites dependent on, they have a list of approved sites and they try to, to go to municipal public buildings first and then they kind of work out a process, but city hall will remain one in my conversation with the county. That's all I can tell you right now. They did look at the LBC at one time, but the LBC, because it's open twenty-four seven, it's difficult for them to try to vote. They vote there and prevent the public from interfering. It's just one main entrance, so I wouldn't put it past the county to look at that again, but that's the only public building they can do.
But it's not part of the action of this?
No, no, it'll be a determination after the fact.
Anyway, we've got this ordinance out there for first reading and we haven't had a comment about it yet, but are we ready to move on that motion?
All of approval of ordinance twelve dash six dash twenty twenty one A. Send the legal description for the new voting precincts.
Consider second. I'll second. That's got, Deb has got. Approve the discussion and if we're ready to vote.
Rose.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Ron Bush.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now back to F one, ordinance approval. Providing the general property taxes that have been collected each year on sort of property located within the Stonework Urban Renewal Area, city of Mount Vernon, county of Glen, state of Iowa, I import the management of the state of Iowa, city of Mount Vernon, county of Glen, Auburn Community School District, and other taxing districts. You pay to a special fund for payment principal and interest on loans, monies, advance due and debtness, when bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city connection with the Stonework Urban Renewal Area, phase three parcels.
I think that reading is more than enough. Yeah, I kind of, I mean, I was gonna text him, give him a hard time, that he was avoiding this one. But I would say just do the second reading and he still had one, he wants to go there.
Make a read of all. Make a read of all. So we're at the point of the second reading, where are we at?
I will make a motion to approve the second reading, ordinance number eleven dash one fifteen dash twenty twenty one A.
Thank you Stephanie, is your second?
I'll second.
And Deb. Stephanie Deb. Are you ready to vote on that one?
Ron Bush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Thank you. Libra, section G, resolution for approval, nothing there. Page I, motion to approval, consideration of claims list. United, the last one that got sent out, section.
And I did have one question on this one. The general communications, ten thousand and change for advertising for the LBC, it just seemed like a large chunk, I'm assuming it's multiple things?
Uh. Without looking at it, I'm assuming it might be the Cedar Rapids.
It says general communication.
So we down our audience.
Ten thousand two fifteen.
Yeah, that is the payment to the Cedar Rapids magazine that we submitted.
Oh, okay.
That you had voted on earlier.
Yep, yep.
Which, by the way, I do have our copies of, if anybody in the council would like them, I just didn't bring them tonight. Uh, but I did receive that box.
Okay, gotcha. It just, for the LBC, you know, we run ads in the paper for.
No. This was that specific article you purchased.
Yeah, okay.
So.
With that clarification on those others?
I, I have some questions also, just a curiosity more than anything else, I, I see that the credit card purchases are usually like between seven and fifteen thousand dollars when we pay them, this one happens to be seven. Do we, we have a good policy and good control of what we purchase on the credit cards?
Yes, so we have a credit card policy as part of the purchasing policy. And Marcia actually receives the receipts overview by us. We haven't had any, should do it though.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, it's one of those deals though, most of the insurance companies pay the capital. EMC, they all dislike credit cards, but it's hard to send any of them traveling anymore without them and then you make a lot of purchases online, especially like parts and wreck. So.
Okay, I just want to be sure, then my second question was, I saw in addendum to the, to the claims list was another payment to total tree, how far along are we?
They're actually fairly far along. They had a couple trees, as soon as I started, but I got the, it's off of college, Florida. There is a city owned right away that we had discussed, I had discussed with Dean before he passed, and so they came back and did some true trimming there. The company that they finally got in here to do the stump grinding did an excellent job, the two young have a machine that I've never seen before, they can back up on everybody's property, make quick work of that. So yes, we're, made to throw them around there, but I would say about ninety percent.
Is that a food of the stump grinding as well? If ninety percent you said?
Yeah, actually, they came in and like I said, made quick work of it, once they were given their green money to do it. They have a few, so that machine, particular machine is on wheels and they back it in and it drives, which is an older stump grinder, but it does work really well, so there's a few places where they couldn't back it up on and have to be done yet. But for the most part, yes. We, I think we'll see a few trickle in, just one of the things that we've noticed, especially in the parks, is when the leaves are all gone, we've now seen some of the hangers that were missed prior to. Some of the locations, especially in the more in the park or well outside of our capabilities, our local capabilities, so. But yes, I would say last week they had the crane in and they were working off of college, but the rest of the things were cordial as well, so it's just kind of. A little back and forth, but yes, I'm hoping we can now seek very reimbursement from them and start looking forward, but planting, could we have money coming in for that?
So is the answer.
I'll provide the second.
Excellent. Did catch a lot of bottom question about, about the question on the credit cards, and I'm assuming that's something that's closely surveyed since when it comes on time.
Yes, and receipts have to be provided for each and every purchase on the credit cards.
Looking second to approve claims list and I think all questions have been answered, are we ready to vote on that? All favor approving that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of corporate issues policies. Anything further to add? Motion carries out on a basis.
No, I obviously wasn't in the office this morning, so I didn't check the numbers today, but they've been hovering in between about one point two and two. As I have stated before, I still have some concern about the number of people that are actually being tested and recorded. There's a lot of the path to test that people are getting that they can swab themselves, those can't be necessarily recorded, so. I feel fairly confident just based upon the vaccines that are coming out and the fact that our numbers haven't gone over that yet, but how this is will be the tell for us, so.
Production from the school district, you know, that are going into a downtown precinct too. You know, comments or questions for wrap? Keep it as an agenda item, I'm wondering if we. I had a theory, discussion consideration of municipal materials managing agreement with the public services, solid waste.
So really, I don't need to vote tonight, I wanted to give you this and give you plenty of time to review it, because obviously this is a big deal for, for Mount Vernon. I have gone through the agreement initially and it made changes that I requested to date. The attorney, I should have his review by the next meeting. Well, I'm sorry, sure, his firm has represented Republic on the matter years ago, so we will have to sign an agreement to allow them to, to finish the review and release, which I received today, so I just have to sign that, send that back.
So first your changes are reflected in what we?
Yes, the agreement that you have in front of you has my changes already in it. And there was just, there were some language changes on dates, how many days have we had to give notice, right to care, things like that. For the most part, one of the highlights is the, we're still working on a location per glass. My expectation is it will be at one of the city sites, I just don't know which one yet, probably Public Works. But that means that it's gonna be, I wanted to make sure that it's visible, so people aren't grabbing around trying to take, chase it down, but. We'll, we'll make that final determination when we, when we figure out exactly what it's going to look like. Yard based is a hundred and twenty dollars a year. Residents, that would be on top of their normal service, so it's not a service that necessarily gets provided, it would be a service that they could subscribe to and they would get another tow delivered to their location and they can do that year round. They can be billed in ten dollar a month increments, so they don't have to come up with a hundred and twenty all at once, but. So those are the two big items that I know people brought to my attention as I don't answer. I left you or gave you kind of a printout or smaller picture, but those are the, don't brag yellow, let it just make sure. We did discuss having a, a color scheme outside of this, and the only problem for that is the initial change to it is fine, but unless they have to do one big purchase, there's, they have to pay quite a bit of a setup fee. For who manufactures these, so. I would be fearful of tying a future city administrator or council into something that would be a detriment to, to them, if you stick with their standard, then. We shouldn't have any initial fees in the future. Our plan is to keep five to ten units onsite in city facilities, so that there is a delivery fee. That would get charged straight off, as long as Republic doesn't have to bring the containers from their site, our staff can just go ahead and cap those off and do that, so. Like I said, I've talked to Matt, I've talked to you, all three of their references. Everybody that I had email communication with said the same thing. They're attentive, it doesn't come without some glitches that they, they do take care of them when they're going out. Command actually gave them a glowing recommendation and did the entire letter, so. So I have no reason not to continue to move forward with this, I did send you some information as a reference to communication with WOXY and how I feel about that. In that, right there.
I've got several questions, there's, unless I miss something, there's no mention of anything about people who are buying, wanting extended periods of not being taken, some type of discount, that would be a city council decision, not a Republic decision. So Republic charges and we have to make a decision or whatever we're gonna go?
No, we will, the, the council, when they initiate this July one, will have to determine whether or not they want to, Republic will, I mean, we can notify Republic and tell them that these are considered snowbirds. And that we don't want to be charged for these states and they won't pick up at those addresses, but that's a council decision that will occur after July one.
So I think that would be a brainer, I mean, maybe with census, it's an extra charge.
So that would affect the, it would be, is what you're saying?
Would affect us kind of, those.
It would just be something that we?
Yes, you would, you would have to make the determination, Republic has stated that, you know, similar to if we have new addresses that come on, it's our responsibility to say we have these new addresses that are coming on and we need to start a service there, so that communication needs to happen on our, our end, and then they bill us for the location vote to pick up.
Also, is it, it's ninety-five for either a thirty-five, sixty-five, or ninety-five? The same, same price for all three of those?
Unless you're gonna pick up every other week.
And also, are you, so it says seven dollars weekly for the recycling cart, are you required to have the recycling cart?
The city has an ordinance requiring the recycling cart.
So everybody has to have a recycling cart?
Again, that's up to the council, I guess, whether or not you want to de-avoid with that, but.
I mean, seven, like I said, that's a big, that's a big recycling thing, I, I, I think some people could get away with going every two weeks with the recycling thing and only getting paid, paying forty dollars a week. Or some people might just say, you know what, why don't I get the ninety-five gallon and I even recycle and just throw it all away, it's a ninety-five. I mean, it, it's all about convenience, isn't it? I mean, we don't wanna buy tags anymore, it's inconvenient, so why do I have to have a, why do I have to have two containers, why can't I just throw it all in one bin? I mean, it's my choice. Well, why don't we give people the choice?
It's not your choice, it's the council's choice.
Well, it's the, it's residents paying the bill, I don't care whether it's our choice or the future council's choice, they're paying, they're not paying the bill every month or every week or every, every other week, though.
So is it fair to say that the things that are on exhibit B, those ideas are the things that the council in the future needs to weigh in on?
What Republic, not, yes and no, I mean, this is what Republic has for, for pricing. We have recycling in garbage service, so here's the challenge, if you, let's just say that you don't. You don't want to require everybody to recycle, how do you potentially change these costs for everybody else? So that's, I mean, sure, what Republic gives us is numbers based upon the number of residents, under the assumption that this is what they're going to do, so they can break those costs out over, you know, a larger populace. If you're going to start recycling that, then, I mean, they're still driving the same amount of lane miles, because they still have to go through the entire community, they still have to use the same vehicles, gas, everything like that, so.
I'm, I'm just sensitive.
No, 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 I, I think everything, the only one that will, will potentially fluctuate, i- if you look at the recycling processing charge. That's all dependent on the recycling market. The, the seven cents. Sometimes they will be able to give us money back if the recycling market's good. It just fluctuates, so.
Right, I'm, I'm just sensitive to, I think your point is up, right?
Yes, the, the challenge is, and this is why cities across the state do it this way, because again, you, you're asking them to bid a dollar a month. It, and it's really not a whole lot different than what WOXY has right at the moment either. They build a city, I'm gonna say about a hundred and ninety thousand throughout the year is what we budget. That's based upon the fact that they get to control the trash pickup in that area, so everybody has to contract, and that's how they spread the cost.
And the other thing is the five fifty, is that five fifty every two weeks or is that five fifty per week?
Yes, that's five fifty a month, they get serviced every other week.
It's five dollars fifty cents per month, per month.
Okay, cause it doesn't, it doesn't stay, those are all monthly prices.
Okay.
Cause except for the, the large.
It says serves weekly and then it doesn't say per month.
These are, so in the middle is what we require them to do from a servicing perspective, this is what, on the right, under pricing, what we will build in per, per month.
So some people doesn't have much garbage, wanted to do the thirty-five every other week.
They would be.
They're willing to recycle, they're looking at thirteen dollars and fifty seven. No, they're looking. So it's twelve, twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty seven essentially.
Right, the seven's up. Okay, so the, the recycling cart is per month seven dollars.
Yes.
See, again, I wish it said per month to the right side here, cause that, that, I'm just assuming when it says every other week or weekly, I'm thinking, well, weekly, seven dollars, it's.
No, if you.
That makes a little difference there, I'm going from twenty-eight dollars now to seven dollars, and I'm thinking, oh, that's a little bit better now.
Well, if you go back to the spreadsheet that I showed you originally, when we brought the business, everything is based upon a monthly price.
Okay.
So you're paying twelve fifty if you go every two weeks for the recycling bin, and now, right now, that, that container that people set out, that's like thirty-two, isn't it? The trash can, there's typically forty gallons. Forty gallons.
I think it's thirty-two.
But anyway, so that would be roughly one of those cans.
That would be the cheapest method, and they, if you look at, like I said, if you go back to the spreadsheet that I gave you before, they will pay slightly more than what they probably are paying per month today, because that would be at six dollars. For in tags plus the ten dollars, so. You're paying.
It's almost exactly the same.
Yeah, it's like six, I think it's probably six dollars more per month, maybe five or six dollars per month.
And when you do a large item, do you have to?
Because you have to remember that there's a ten fifty charge on top of this.
Right.
That's the city's.
Right. When you do a large item, what do you have to have to have them pick it up? Do you have, do they just reference it and then they send it to you and then you bill the people, like the twenty-five dollar?
Yeah, some of them are, some of the items, if you look under the definition in the contract itself, can just be set out and they will pick them up, others will, you will have to do the same thing, if you do now, you have to contact city hall and they will set up, they pick up the item.
But you don't, you won't have a tag that they can, you can put on and say, yeah, it's gone to the city, or you just get notified?
No, we get notified, we get a monthly invoice and then we intern bill. And then, from the perspective of a cleanup, you basically get what amounts to two large items and a yard of, of waste, which is more than typically allowing people to put out for after cleanup days. You don't wanna increase that, because I mean, there are those landlords that have houses to put everything out on cleanup days and we usually have costs, so that's not a cost that we turn necessarily give back or put back on, on the individuals. That's why we haven't done it the last three years, because we've used the recycling credit that we've gotten up until this year to offset that cost.
Cause we need to backpack commercial customers, we've got a lot of, certain residents.
Uh, no, and I will, I will double check with this, but I'm almost positive that commercial customers will end up paying less than what they do today.
Speaking of large items, if I write correctly in here, there's a monthly, each month, people can put out like a ball gag, as long as it can be handled by one person, if I remembered, and I remember that correctly, yeah.
Yeah, under certain circumstances.
Which is a different, I'm sorry.
Yeah, under the, those circumstances, yes, they have to be able to pick it up.
Yeah.
One individual.
Yeah.
And, and you have to understand that most of the time, I don't want to speak for a public, but most of the times it'll be a, probably one person show.
Right.
Cause the automated units only typically have a dryer and queue a lot of it, so as long as one individual can do it.
My point being that, that that's something that currently, we've got called city hall, there's another tagging as well, it's something that we don't, a service we don't.
Yeah, this is one of those deals where, as I told WOXY, it's not a reflection on their service, it's a reflection of two things, number one, timing, and two, where that service is going. So we were going to have to increase rates, which prompted all of this, and I don't think, like I said, I don't have anything bad or wrong to say about WOXY services, Republic services are going to look slightly different in some manners.
Just as a note on those bulk bags, I just noticed it says there is a per item charge and must be placed on a list provided by the city prior to collection day, so you guys are prepared if you're gonna have to.
Which we do now.
I figured, I just wanted.
Even when you place certain items with tags, so you can call up city hall and say, I want to put out a mattress, for instance, with somebody tagged, we still have to know when it's going to be out and then notify WOXY. So we do that today, it's just slightly, looks slightly different.
Okay.
Tom, Paul has, Paul has a question as well.
Paul, you have a question, sir?
Um, yes, I do, thank you for taking this, I, I've had several people, generally, it's, the, you know, the, the senior citizens who, you know, put out a can once a month. You know, so they're, they're putting a three dollar tag out once a month, and, you know, recycling periodically and that's baked in. So I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding you clearly, Chris. I could, if, if, if I'm one of those people who puts it out once a month, I could do the thirty-five gallon trash cart. I could, if I'm one of those people who puts it out once a month, I could do the thirty-five gallon trash cart for five fifty a month, the sixty-five gallon recycling cart for seven dollars a month. That's twelve fifty a month for my solid waste. And I get the added benefit of actually being able to put out an additional week amount.
Yes, your total bill though is going to reflect, this is what, we get this question a lot because people actually accuse the city of double billing for garbage. So we have, the city has a ten dollar and fifty cent charge for leaf pickup, right away, basically maintenance, and a few other items that we charge. So your total bill for, for this, for a month under this is, I'm just doing the math in my head, someone twenty-three oh seven or something.
Twenty-three oh seven, half the way.
And if you only bought a tag a month, you know, currently you're essentially paying thirteen fifty. So those individuals are going to potentially see more per month. They do get more service, they can put more out. But those that are only using one tag a month are going to pay slightly more. And this is the catch in what we've been talking about for the last year is, those individuals are gonna pay slightly more, and the individuals that are putting out more, the bigger families, are going to pay less.
And to be clear, the ten fifty we're currently charging and will still be charged under this whatever agreement we have down the line. So that's, I mean, yeah, so that's a.
So the clarification that I wanted to make sure I understood was, you know, I understand the twelve fifty base charge. We pay that now, we'll pay it going forward. The, the delta from what I'm paying now in the tax system versus paying for, you know, going forward, in this scenario, if I go with the thirty-five gallon every other week for five fifty, and I do the sixty-five gallon recycling for seven, I am paying a little bit more, but I'm not paying, I was hearing, you know, figures like double, you know, double the price, or twenty-five a year more, and, or, I mean, a month more. And that's the math I needed to get into my head to be able to explain to people what we're doing. Because, you know, Debbie and I, we don't often, I mean, there's months where we do, you know, one thirty gallon can every other week, you know, so the thirty-five gallon looks like a really good option to me, and we do a lot of recycling, so the sixty-five gallon recycling looks good to me. But if you, if you understand that the ten fifty is already being paid and it's going to be there, that you're really just paying the difference for the every other week for a thirty-five gallon can and for the recycling.
Versus what you pay in tax.
Versus what you pay in tax.
Yeah, but Paul, you're gonna, to the elderly thing, you're gonna go from the ten fifty plus three, which is thirteen fifty, to ten fifty plus twelve fifty, which is twenty-three. That's ten bucks, ten times twelve is a hundred and twenty dollars. Fixed income, a hundred and twenty bucks is a lot of money. I don't care what anybody says, if you're on fixed end, a hundred and twenty dollars is money that they are not longer having.
Can you say that again, please, Eric?
Did I not speak that correctly? Yes, so if you put out one bag per month, you only use one three dollar sticker today per month, you're essentially paying thirteen fifty for garbage service. Going to this, you will have the ten fifty plus seven plus five fifty, so you will be at plus seven cents. You'll have what amounts to twenty-three oh seven. So there will be a ten dollar a month difference. Now, people are not going to want to hear this, but those that are buying more tags are currently subsidizing those that buy less. Because it costs to bring a truck here every week. So I guess I put it this way, those that buy more tags, because that is our revenue, that is how we pay for them. It's not a dollar for dollar match, so it doesn't cost three dollars to dump a forty, there's more to it. So those that buy more tags right now are subsidizing those that buy less. And now it is going to be more equal, and it is going to be more a month, and this is the conversation that we've had for the last year.
So based on the math that I heard, currently if I'm paying thirteen fifty, that's my ten fifty charge on one tag, I'm going up to a twenty-three dollar. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I've got a ten dollar up charge.
Correct.
How much nine dollars and fifty cents?
So that's a hundred and twenty dollars a year. But I also have the opportunity to put garbage out one extra time for that ten dollars. So I'm very sensitive to the, to the senior population and the low income. But I can at least understand how this works and can then explain it. One of the other questions I had, and I won't spend, you know, a lot of your time here, but these, these cart containers, they all have a barcode with an individual number. And there are communities that use those primarily today. They're using them to in doing some studies of how much people are recycling versus how much people are doing trash. But, you know, being in a company that uses technology and bar scanning for virtually everything we do when we move parts and things, I would just like to see the question asked, you know, is there an opportunity for the future to introduce barcodes readers on this process? And it's a pay as you go. If Republic picks up and dumps my barrel and reads my barcode that's assigned to my house, I pay for that. If they don't, I don't pay for that. And I will agree, Chris, that it does cost money to go all around the town. But if I don't have to sit and idle while I dump a cart, I gain some fuel efficiency because I'm not sitting and idling.
Yes, I don't, like I said, I don't want to speak on Republic's, that would make the assumption, number one, that the company is located in Mount Vernon and didn't have to travel here to do that. Garbage, I will tell you, having experience with invisible garbage, there's a lot of factors that go into it. But Republic doesn't control the landfill fees that are being charged to Lynn County Cedar Rapids solid waste. And there are a few other things that I'm sure Matt could elaborate on. So I think the concept's novel, and there's probably ways to continue to work efficiency, Paul, but I would stop short of saying over the next ten years during this contract that that's probably going to be a feasible outcome. I don't want to oversell something that I know that we probably aren't going to be able to deliver on. Does that make sense?
And I'm not asking for it to be done. What I'm asking is that we plant the seed.
Oh, for sure. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, for us, one of the question marks in our RFP, where the use of technology, where are you at in the recycling market as far as end byproducts, so that we get that completed in, you know, both a sustainable and efficient manner? So again, knowing that the margins in solid waste are very slim.
Right, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I say that, I mean, there's kind of a reason that Waste Management and Republic have gotten where they're at as far as companies go, and smaller companies struggle a little bit. Because like I said, the margins are fairly small, and gas prices go up, things like that, and the margins get eaten up really quick. So, yeah, like I said, I'm not, I don't want to sit here and presume to be an expert on garbage. It's just in conversations what we're contending about.
Yeah, no, thank you for taking my questions, and I know a lot of work went into this, and it's part of the process, so thank you.
So I do have a couple of questions, if you will. So help me under, so let's say my house is purchased by somebody else. As a matter of fact, do I just leave my barcode?
So the container will stay with the.
With my house, okay.
Now.
That, yeah.
That doesn't always happen, that's why we'll have extra on site.
Well, and that's why I'm looking at delivery, removal, and exchange and wondering what the hey that means.
Yes, so that fee is if Republic has to come from the view for Cedar Rapids or wherever they're coming from to make the delivery. That's why we've asked, we will find space for ten of them, and then.
To keep them on.
Yes.
Because we're growing, and I would hate for that new person to have to.
It's a lot easier for them to bring over ten units than for one.
Welcome to town, here's your thirty dollar bill.
So the city staff will deliver a person to Republic.
Right. So the other thing, I just, clarification, so on the yard waste, it says serviced April to November, ten bucks per month, but billed for the whole entire year at a hundred and twenty was.
So one of the things that we discussed is you can, like I said, we can bill like a hundred and twenty for the year, or they could do a ten dollars or something.
I'm just, it looks odd where it says serviced April through November, but billed at a hundred and twenty.
Yes.
So I just.
Yeah.
Point of, you might want to look at it. And then the last thing is, was there any thought in putting, it's kind of what Paul was talking about, like a cost improvement encouragement clause, you know? And this is gonna be a hard sell where it says all fees are subject to four percent increase annually, with no intention of incentivizing the vendor to do cost improvement. Whether that's through looking at barcoding technology and coming at it that way, or some other kind of improvement. I'm not a waste person, I can't tell you what those would be. But is there any, is there a clause that could be considered to encourage the vendor, Republic, to look at cost improvements so that we can avoid the four percent annually rate increase? Because I can tell you, that's gonna be a pretty hard thing to swallow. Nobody else gets to increase their fee by four percent. My pay doesn't go up by four percent.
The only thing I would say to that is that you would have to start the process over.
Not disagreeing, just saying, should we look at.
Everybody bid that. So to answer your question, the answer is no, not much you want to start the process over.
So we can't.
Did you, you, we requested bids.
Mm-hmm, I know.
And both Republic and ABC put an automatic increase in. So if you're going to say that you're not going to allow that, that will change prices. You can put an incentive in there, but if you're not going to automatically allow them, then you're basically going back and saying.
That is not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, is it possible to put in a clause to pass some incentive towards cost improvement, rather than just saying, I'm gonna raise your prices four percent? It's just something to consider. I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying a consideration.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm trying to be realistic, and the short answer would be no, because it all goes back to that bid. We did not put that in the RFP. Now, we can work with Republic. I mean, it would be them obviously to do things as efficiently as possible as well, but that RFP included the bid price, so those would be the numbers.
I understand. I just, you know, again, ten years is a long time and four percent inflation over four years, or over ten years is, it's a pretty hefty, yeah, time of, I mean, it layers, right?
Yes.
Four percent, and then you get one point, yeah. It's. It just seems like in this day and age, it is not unnatural out in the open market to have an incentive clause as a vendor. And it might be an incentive clause where they're sharing, where prices could go up X, but we get, but our customers, our people out there, our residents get to share that cost savings. Just a consideration, again, not saying yes or no, I'm just, we live in the world where things are constantly changing, and to say that we can't do any cost improvements over a ten year period seems a little short sighted on the whole.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if you're going to have that as a basis or a conversation piece, then we need to do it.
Understood.
Part of that process. The point being is, there's risk to them as well over that ten year period. So to go back and say yes, I mean, there is a chance that the recycling market will tank. There is a chance that the landfill tippy fees or something like that that they can't control are going to end up costing them more, so.
I know.
Yes, I mean, we could have something in there, and I can discuss this with Matt. You know, I'm not sure what the language would look like.
I don't, I don't either. I just, I, it was just something running around in my brain and I felt like I needed to ask.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to make sure when we have conversations, there's some realistic expectations. I don't want to paint a picture that, yeah, I walk out of here and we can make something like that happen. But it'll be a conversation I can have with Matt in the course of the next two weeks. But, yeah, I mean, we'll see what it will look like.
I just, again, it just, it seems, it's a long period of time, and for there not to be some efficiencies in the whole process over a period of ten years where all, where anybody is doing is increasing costs, I think is hard for people to swallow.
Yeah, I know. You're welcome to.
I do want to respond to your question.
Time to come up to the mic, so that's where it's on.
My name's Matt, I'm under Republic Services. I do want to respond to your question somewhat, and I'm gonna say, Chris, a language like that wasn't a bad approach. It's not a good language, but we do have a link to recycling and recycling processing. And our recycling center and commodity markets are, there's something that do change over time. And there is an incentive for us to improve efficiencies and improve, you know, our practices to lower costs, and that will lower costs for you as well. That recycling processing fee, you know, right at the one I did at the time, it was $7 a ton. We might be getting a rebate by July next year, and you will see savings based on that. But I will take this in the last, several months here. When you look at driver wages, when you look at truck costs, when we bid and contractors, when we're bidding for cost improvements, and we're hoping that over the next 10 years, we can keep, we can keep pace with technology and everything, to keep our costs down, so we can remain competitive, so we can make money under the contract. But when the bid happens, when, that's one of the, when you see the savings, we're repricing everything that we're hoping to do with the cost improvements in already. We don't price them in on the back end, does that make sense to you? When I did it, I bid it aggressively as I can, hoping that over the next 10 years with technology and everything, we're going to be able to, we're, we're going to be okay under this because of the improvements that we made across that. In our industry, just over the last several months, in Cedar Rapids, there's been a lot of driver wages going up significantly. We don't expect that to change. CDL drivers may be short supply. There are sign-on bonuses for CDL drivers right now. Our truck costs are up. The truck that we're going to have here is $70,000 more today than it was a year ago. So that 4% is not going to be talked about. Our real cost increased by about 4% in a year. And we have historical records to look at, and we can say that's about what it is. You know, an, an option I have, if you don't like 4% is to water sewer trash. Index, if Bureau Leader Statistics puts out, over time, you can see it's going higher than 4%. 4% doesn't meet our criteria. But there are things in there already to address some of your concerns. But if any of you have questions correctly, or if we had some of these concerns, I'd have to answer them. Or right here.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of it is, is really honestly messaging, right? It, because just on its face, on a piece of paper, the, the customer, the resident, is going to see a 4% annual increase. They're not going to understand what they're paying for. So it's up to us to message appropriately if it's already baked into the bid price. You know, I just wanted to be sure that we really truly thought about what it is and how we're going to message this, because everything keeps going up, right? Nothing ever goes down. And I, I think we just need to be very, very careful how we're addressing this, because it is a big change.
No, and I completely understand what you're saying. You know, on water sewer, for instance, we have a 3% automatic increase per year. As I stated, especially on sewer, that's probably over the course of the next 10, 15 years. It's not necessarily to do with inefficiency, it's more to do with what we're being handed to by the state. To, to answer kind of what Matt hit on, we've discussed kind of in detail this recycling, recycling processing charges too. That is one of the items where recycling obviously presents an opportunity for them to make money, whether recycling interior or their, or their head. So from a efficiency standpoint, you know, that number could increase. Could even actually be incredible at some point. So there's a couple other things that I have pointed out in this. So right now, we can talk about low-income individuals. Keep in mind that we currently subsidize low-income families and mom or that we provide tags for them, that they prove income, things like that. That doesn't necessarily mean that this council can't do the same thing here.
We did talk about that.
Yeah, it, it's just going to be in a different...
It's just going to be a different format.
Yes, than, than giving them actual tags. So, yeah, like I said, there's not a, to me, there's not a perfect solution. And, and we knew this, this is why we've been kind of, we've been discussing it for over five years, that it was something that I brought forward when I, you know, a year into my tenure here, but...
I think Deb makes a valid point, and I appreciate that you brought that up, because it is over what we do, you think about it, because this is a long contract, so...
And it is a long contract, and I know people are going to get kind of hung up in the, in the tenure. It's a normal contract for garbage. Five to 10 years, either.
Again, that's such a simple...
For sure, it doesn't look a long contract, but it doesn't necessarily mean that, if you look at the other clauses in there, if they're not fulfilling, you know, the intent of this contract, they have a, a time to cure that, or they can go out and do this all over again. So there's, the, the out clauses for me are significant. That was the most important part of this, and signing a long-term contract. Now they fulfill their end of bargain, or we go shopping again. But like I said, you watch you selling off routes, or have been selling off routes. So the number of contractors in this industry continues to shrink. While I think the tag program definitely served a purpose, there hasn't been enough discussions about some of the nuances to that program as well. And we, we touched on COVID and a few other things as far as efficiencies go, but, you know, tonight was the first night that I talked about the fact that those that spend less on tags are actually being subsidized by those that find them types. Because, again, it still costs money to get a truck here, and so on and so forth. So, you know, it, it's, this is not a, a perfect scenario in the, in the grand scheme of things. And again, I, you know, I felt like we were just making this decision over a six-month period. Shame on us, but there's been a lot of discussion on it. And, and again, the same reason that I'm not asking you to approve this contract tonight, because it's still like the attorney firm, you know, feedback. So in two weeks, I hope to have that, we just have to sign the agreement. Say nothing to attorneys.
Thank, thank you, Matt, for, for talking to that, that, that helped me understand.
Let there be some value to Saturday morning, ABC or City Hall, and getting the question for each out there as possible. A lot of people are visual learners, not our business, it's a visual design. And have the all-size bins out there. See what colors they are, see what sizes they are, how much transport, so on. Have a, if you have that sheet, you know, where we're at now, what is being proposed. You know, top 10 frequently asked questions, how are, you know, low-income people being handled now? How will they handle in the future? And having a representative from Republic that can answer those questions. I know I can't suggest this idea unless I was departmental.
Well... There is a, there is a public outreach that was already part of the RFP, so whether or not Matt wants to do that or not, somebody from Republic will be... But yes, pre-COVID, we had planned on doing a Saturday coffee, whatever. And we had one set up that was called off due to the blizzard. And then, like I said, COVID duration, I mean, it feels like we've not paid us to a certain extent the last two years, just because of limitation of meetings. But from a staff perspective, we were fully prepared to, you know, rotate through, through a year, and we'll do that again gladly. And, and there's plenty of print materials that they've already had, but yes, outreach. We have two significant projects that we are going to undertake this year that somebody in my position hopefully will have to stay in their entire time. If you want to, the meter we change out, the meter change out, and, but that's, I don't know.
Well, we're...
So...
I mean, if you change ones, it's a lot easier.
I like what Tom said, you provide those scenarios, because I'm thinking through this for myself, and you know, I've got two huge teenage boys there. And for our family, we're probably going through six tags a month. You know, a couple of weeks, we get to 18 bucks. For us, if I'm going to go for the 95 gallon container, probably. And so we're looking at $16.85. You know, there's a lot of families like mine that are going to have a little bit of lower payment. Yes, I'll have to figure out what to do with my glass, but I have these other things to do. So I just think if we, you know, like Tom's saying, we provide some scenarios. Here's family A, family B, family C. And also, we do need to talk about that subsidizing program. Like we're doing now, we talked about this before, we all think, I mean, I think in general, we're, we're looking at the sensitivity like Paul was talking about, about seniors and low-income families, and we wanted to make sure that we're addressing that as well.
Yeah, and, and the only thing that I would say tonight was, those are all decisions that the council can make outside of, you know, this contract, because those are decisions that are completely unneeded. We, like I said, the, the tag program that we have right now subsidizes five, six, not lots. It's just a program that we provide.
And the reason that we can, that some huge people make those decisions is because all the billing runs through the city, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that, just to provide that clarification.
And that will be different.
Right.
With that?
That won't change, correct?
No, that was the...
So you provide Republic the number of, so the pickup points...
Republic is going to invoice us on the number of units that we give them.
And then, and then we bill the residents.
Correct.
So we have control over what that bill looks like. Whether we're subsidizing low-income, doing snowbird situations, whatever that dollar jack goes up. On a non-garbage related issue, item number four includes, the city agrees that company may use any information received from the city in marketing all its available services to the resident. I'm just wondering about data privacy for residents. Does that information get resold? What, what sort of information is included in that, and what controls are put on it?
So from a billing perspective, their billing is by address. So it doesn't matter if you live in that address, or Tom lives at that address, their billing is per address. The information as far as who lives there and all of the information still resides in City Hall.
Okay.
It's similar to what we do right now at Oxy. We cut Oxy a check for $21,000, $22,000. Based upon...
Numbers.
Numbers. Yeah, and this will just be based upon habits, but...
The other note that I have was in, is, I think it's in the table, let me get that. Yeah. Section 3.3, the sentence just stops in a way. If residents choose to change the container size or service level after the initial rollout and... So probably don't want to just finish the sentence.
That might not want to be...
It feels like it's a...
When I accept that the changes, I might just block off, so...
But yeah, I, I do like the idea of having the control and not having to deal with this for another 10 years. And having the council, giving council the flexibility and the road to provide for snowbird relief and low-income housing, and some of the other things that we've all thought about. I like what you said.
Yeah, I would say to this, if something happens in the next 10 years, we invent some way to create fuel out of the landfill and things of that nature. I mean, that will change the landscape on a much bigger picture. But there are ways to look at a, look at a contract or something significant like that happens as well, so...
Good questions, good discussion?
For the record, the color looks very reasonable.
Yes.
It's yellow.
It's very...
Thank you for pressing Tim. Okay, moving to number four, discussion consideration of request qualifications for legal services. Does action this meeting change on the term?
So I invited request qualifications. We're going to call it qualification round, because it's mainly about the qualifications. If they're going to have to provide a non-legal ring as part of this, but I'm not necessarily asking for bids, I want to know who the attorney would be and what we get out of each firm. So my expectation in this would be, we'll see a mix. We will see a mix of single attorney firms and larger firms with multiple attorneys. This is all stemming from the fact that Bob had indicated that he's starting his retirement process and stepping away. And it would be, unless it's been, I want to say 10 years? I meant for six. I didn't want to say it's been, unless the attorney for at least 10, so it would make a lot of sense for us to go out and see what's available. I'm assuming that somebody from Simmons Prime will also potentially foot their aim in that I didn't necessarily want, or think it was a good idea, unless you tell me differently. To just go to a new attorney in Simmons Prime without seeing what's potentially out there, prices might be different, so...
Keep that process moving, I guess, yeah?
Yeah.
I wouldn't need a motion on this one.
You do?
I would need a motion on this one, or is it...
To keep it going?
In that case, I'll move approval of the request for qualifications for legal services as presented.
Okay.
Ready to vote on the motion, but assuming the legal services are clean. All favor the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Prepared, as the county reports, please receive your file. Discussion items, Laura's be-scheduled?
So we have a lot of places referenced in our code. That says that a be-schedule be adapted. I haven't been able to find one. Especially for like planning and zoning fees. We like where they put some money on the table, but not collecting them. But what we wanted to do, I have Laura consolidate with all the department and various fees that we currently have. This will be part of the budget discussion. Most of these fees are fairly normal, and I don't want to, and some of them we're actually charging already, the incident reports and things like that, I have law enforcement, parks and ref fees. Those are all being charged. We just never had kind of a one-stop list before, so that was a reason we had consolidated.
It's great to have this all available, I'll just put a date on it, it's too effective as of...
Well, so... That was kind of my question, since this looks like it's being adopted via resolution.
Well, so it will have to be adopted by our resolution. Laura filled that made in based upon this meeting.
Sure.
It won't actually get adopted until you approve the budget.
But based on that, if, I mean, so we put this fee, and I'm not opposed to putting a fee schedule or, you know, in, in place, but I guess my concern would be, does the resolution need to be revisited every time a four-year-old soccer resident cost changes? You know what I mean? Like it just feels like that would be, and not that that happens often, but it would...
Technically speaking, it should.
See, that's what I'm saying.
So these fees historically have been reviewed annually anyway. There's a lot of references in our city code to this fee schedule, it just hasn't, to my knowledge, ever been created. Now, each new visitor department has created fee schedules, but in my security, they've never adopted them by a resolution, it's just been discussion. So the pool is perfect. We talked about cost going up, things like that. Annually, we talked about whether or not they should increase fees there or not as part of the budget discussion, and this, so to answer your question, yes, this should be looked at yearly, and it should be added to the list of resolutions that we do look at annually if we're going to change fees. It's much easier to do that than to adopt a new ordinance every time that you want to introduce a new fee schedule.
So, yes, my other question would be something like the parents' night out Friday thing that Matt did. Like how regularly does this need to go?
So those, those programs that get introduced, especially at the LBC, you won't find it here, just because they're, they're separate and they're moving targets. So those are all based on it, so for instance...
Because this is stuff that we can expect to have happen on a annual basis.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Those are more one-time, more special than...
Yep.
Okay, all right. I just, I, and I don't mean to pick on Parks and Rec because of it, but it just, you know, he's here... I just, I, and I don't mean to pick on Parks and Rec because of it, but it just, you know, he's here and it's convenient. But I just didn't want, I don't want to saddle us with having to deal with a resolution every five minutes because we gotta put some.
I wouldn't want to, because I have to write the resolution.
So I have a question. So is the language used in this fee schedule consistent with the language that is used in the, either the resolution or the, the code, the, the city code that we have? I mean, is somebody going to go and find a conditional use permit in the ordinances that we currently have and be able to go, oh, yeah, there it is. I'm using that as a thing.
Yeah, so. So the ordinance basically references the fee schedule.
But it doesn't specifically say there'll be a fee for the conditional.
No, because then the, the, the purpose for that is not wanting to have to amend an ordinance every time you want to change a fee, which is obviously more complicated, more costly, because you have to have a public hearing.
Well, that's a good point, like nuisance abatement. What is, is it clearly understood what that is?
Yes, it's defined in the code.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so each, yeah, each of these items has a section, you know, a different ordinance that.
Yeah.
Points them out. You just don't want them listed in that specific ordinance, because if you do, you have to amend that ordinance every time you change a fee. So by doing it by resolution, it's, it's a one-meeting, you know, I VAS or consolidate them all so that it can just be reviewed annually with the budget. And hopefully, that's all you have to do.
So then the idea would be that annually, we go in and say, okay, now soccer's at thirty-eight and now the pool is seven dollars and then just.
And each, each one of the, the departments will still make recommendations. So like, for instance, all of the Parks and Rec fees go to Parks and Rec Board for recommendations prior to coming to City Council. And that will stay the process. It's just, when we put this on the website, here's the fee schedule. Those that are looking for it can go and look all of our fees.
So is the ten fifty that we've been, or the ten dollars that we've been talking about, is that going to go in there too? Exploited by water bill?
So sewer, water, storm, none of, none of those fees are listed on here. I can.
I think it might be good. I think it was just an idea, something to think about. I, I like, I like this presentation, I think that this makes sense. It's easy to read, it saves you going through a whole bunch of different things to try to find really what your monetary impact is. But that water sewer bill is.
Yeah, the only difference I, I mean, and I realize this is cut hairs here, but those are service charges versus uh, uh, application fees, basically.
I guess maybe then, I'm, I'm suggesting that is there, is there a fee schedule, a service fee schedule that we should put out for our garbage services?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we can.
Our water sewer blah blah service, you know.
We can, I mean, it's, it's the same.
Just an idea.
There's just a couple of things. We've talked about this a little while back. I don't see anything for animal, animal control or dog.
Uh, no, because we basically, I want to say we almost did, took away with the licensing after direction we had. How we did that?
Now, what we talked about, from what I remember, it has been a little while ago, but that people come in and get them, but haven't necessarily been renewing.
They don't have to do the renew.
Followed up on that. But the fact that it's not even listed here is I think missing something.
TD, UTV.
Just think of the same thing.
Yes, that's true. Um, also, and this is kind of nitty-gritty, but it's just something to strike. We, the, the pool pass, the single pass, that only five dollars one for a resident. Just feels like, you know, when we go to the double pass of family, it's a thirty to twenty-five dollar amount. I just felt like our residents should get a little bit more in the break. If we're going to charge our residents a hundred dollars, maybe it should be a little more than that. I'm sorry, oh, did I just read it? It is fifteen dollars more. I missed read, I'm sorry, I was reading something. However, babysitter pass, that one's anyway. I'm assuming that rate is based on where the family lives and not where the babysitter lives.
That's what, of the wife, same way.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
I think this is a great start to having this compilation as it is now. But I think there are probably examples of other things that could be considered to be added to it, that even make it more inclusive, more valuable to city staff as well as the citizens, thinking about coming up for themselves. Thank Laura for putting this together and thinking of ideas, other things to add to it. And I would vote with that at WOTC, Water and Sewer and things like that too. You have any comments or suggestions for the sewer or for the fee schedule? Then moving on to the folks from Mayor's City Council or City Administrator, have anything?
No, just the disruption that we'll have tomorrow.
Churchill, is that what you'd like to do?
I would assume I probably won't do it if it, if it is. I would want to be up there, because the water sewer does actually move them in. You don't know it until you're up there. But um, leaf program, here's another one that, that sheer challenges us greatly because leaves started to fall early, then we got rains, then the leaves hung on, and went late. And then the weather cooperated more than she ever has, um, dropped. So we did go almost nine weeks. We still make everybody happy. We did, we did get a significant amount of leaves picked up. But we did go two weeks longer than what we normally do in a fall. And as you pointed out, that's one of the benefits, obviously, bringing that back in-house. The only challenge, obviously, that we have is we still have to deal with all of the other items. So much pickup and things like that can potentially challenge us. But uh, we did do a race like handings. The unit that we do have is done with a single operator, which is nice. He's got quite efficient at driving that around, outside of the noise, that was pretty significant. We did have a water beam break, and it ended up being a two-inch line a block away from my house. So that was last week as well. Did just take them to that part of the night, so I think they started at a little after ten-thirty and finished up at about eight o'clock in the morning. So reminder to say, oh, we have our commission lunch in. We haven't asked those for those two hours before we do that. And then the last thing is, I hope to have, so Laura is there tonight. There was a, a public meeting on the CO2 pipeline. It's not actually going through, if you get to see the Gazette article, this will traverse through Iowa and eventually make its way into Illinois. So there's, looked to me like there was two segments, one that kind of is a diagonal through the state of Iowa and one comes out of the north, from the northeast and beats up with it. But that section actually comes just to the west of the city limits of Mount Vernon. So she was going to that meeting tonight. As I told Tom, my, my hope is for her to be able to synopses together on what she learns tonight and send that out to you as soon as she can put it together. Beyond that, I dealt with natural gas pipelines, I dealt with oil pipelines, I've never dealt with the CO2 pipeline. So we just received an application last week, like a day before the article on the paper broke. Landowners got a letter and that's how we found out. So, so we're closely watching that pipeline and how they could affect potential moving lessons.
International sessions Saturday morning at the Puffy's Lib, had at least eighty people there. In the afternoon session, we had about twenty people there. And Senator was definitely opposed to having the liquid CO2, south of our community and west of our community along that pipeline. So be very curious to see how Senator is, how you'd be meeting the veterans tomorrow or tonight, or more so.
One, not on the topic, but it, it's something reminding me, Thanksgiving night, power in Auburn and Lisbon and a, a huge chunk of this area went out. Was there any, if we got.
I have not received anything other than my individual residential. It.
It was only like twenty minutes.
Yes.
It wasn't, you know.
It had to have been significant at one of the tran, or one of the transfer stations though, because it affected the entire group. So my assumption is, is a, a transformer or something at the station itself was, was tripped. Thankfully, they dispatched crews and it was twenty minutes before they got it. No, I have not received.
Okay, I just, I didn't know.
Isn't it impossible to at least communicate with City Administrator about that though?
Yes, but I have noticed through the process that she doesn't necessarily get all of that information immediately. So she gets debriefed and then will debrief me. But that can take anywhere from two to five days on average. She, you know, it's just like everything else, when I reach out and say, hey, what happened? And I'll get two or three of the next scenarios in the fair lit time of the matter.
At the end of the agenda, anything else needs to come before this meeting? No, and we are sure.